Good evening. I will call to order this Town and Town Council Budget Meeting of March 24th. Order. The first item on our agenda is public submissions, communications, and public participation. This is limited to agenda items only with a two-minute limit as we have in the last two meetings. We will be strictly enforcing this time limit and topic restriction. Just to remind members of the public, we do have a public hearing scheduled for April 2nd at 7:00 PM here in council chambers and as a hybrid meeting. So if you wish to participate in public participation, I ask you to come up to the table, give us your name and address, or you can raise your zoom hand and press star nine. And we'll start in the room. Is there anyone in the room who would like to participate? No? Okay. Anyone online who would like to participate? All right. Not seeing anyone. We will move on to item three with just consideration of the town manager's proposed fiscal year 2425 budget.
Great. Thank you, Chair. We have a good lineup tonight. State Police TPW, Human Services, Library, Recreation, anywhere else you'd like to go. So I'm going to start out with law enforcement. As you all know, the Town of Tallinn does not have its own police department. I think we all agree that we cannot afford our own police department. So with that, like many towns across Connecticut, 60 other towns or so, we hire a resident trooper to police our town. That is in addition to the general troop coverage that our town already enjoys anyway. And that is in addition to actually having the troop in our town, which is rare. So we're very fortunate in that regard. The overall budget reflects, the overall budget of $649,258 is a decrease of $68,700. Basically, almost 10% decrease. This decrease is due primarily to the fringe rate decrease for resident troopers. So if I can explain, basically, the more junior the cop is, the more inexpensive the cop is, and the more senior the cop is, the more expensive. And then it goes up by rank after that. And while we enjoyed Kevin Eklund and all the experience he brought, he was certainly at the very highest top end for a trooper. The three troopers and the temporary fourth that we have now are all fairly junior and junior steps of pay. Hence, the savings. However, as you know, as they move on in their career and move up in pay grades, our increase will go up as well. So we certainly can enjoy the decrease right now. But I can tell you that that is absolutely going to go up as troopers' experience goes up, should they stay in the Town of Tallinn. Benefits of not having our own police department is like a lot of things like with IT, where you subwinds or like with, instead of having a staff attorney, we hire out to a firm, is that we have the entire services of the Connecticut State Police available to us. Look, every town has that anyways that needs them. But with having the troop in town and having a resident troopers, we believe that it's possible we have quicker access. Some of those things include the radio system. The radio system, they actually pay a third of, along with our fire and ambulance department. You know, should there be any sort of major crime squad or major incident, the Major Crime Squad, Narcotics, BCI, any of those would come in and investigate it. That's irrelevant to the fact if we have resident troopers or not. They're still coming in. If that happens, if there's a murder in Vernon, major crimes is heading to Vernon, and they have their own police department. So, but it is nice to have the state police and their entire services available to us. Moving in to the budget, you can see, and with us tonight is Lori Sherwood, our admin assistant down in this resident trooper's office. And that's the payroll you see at up the top. That is her. There is $10,000 in overtime available, I believe. Is that to the troopers and Lori, or just?
Just the troopers.
Keep in mind that we get grants and such all the time, or not all the time, but often for things like traffic enforcement, DUI and such. Also, keep in mind that the troop is very good about sending troopers to our community events. Stuff we have on the green, anything, the troopers, they're very, very, very good about sending them to them. And the troopers are great about when they attend as well. The third line, the $563,000, again, that is the beef of the cost, and that is for the actual troopers themselves. The $25,000 is the third of the cost for us to use TN, our 911 center and such. But with that, I'm prepared to take any questions as you may. If you recall, we had a Lieutenant Hayward from Troop C in here about two months ago, showing the virtues of having a sergeant here at Troop C. And that's something to consider, but keep in mind that, as he explained to us then, the cost for a sergeant is more, although we are seeing a savings based on Kevin. Again, that price will go up over the years. And my recommendation is to stay with the four troopers. But again, I could be, you know, to have a sergeant here isn't the worst thing in the world either. So that's where we are. Any questions on the budget?
Just a question, Brian, about the sergeant. So was sergeant requested by the police department?
Sure. What do you mean? What are you asking?
Like, was that an initial request from the resident trooper's office? I don't know.
You were here. The lieutenant came and asked if you, I believe, that you consider a sergeant based on the seniority of the troopers that are here.
Okay.
And the now absence of Kevin Eklund.
Okay. And I know it's not in this budget tonight. Was your just general feeling that that was something that we could do without for a little bit? Or is it more, there are more substantive reasons why you felt like we didn't need one?
I have not seen any definitive proof in any way, shape, or form that having a sergeant here makes our town any safer. None. I also haven't seen any definitive proof that it makes us less safe to have a sergeant. I have no definitive proof of anything. I receive stats on nothing. Same budget of the four troopers that we had last year and the year before and the year before. Because I'm very satisfied with the police services that we get from the Connecticut State Police Resident Trooper Program. We can debate the sergeant thing, again, up and down. And we could look at the job description of a trooper versus a sergeant and see that it's, they're much different, obviously. And, you know, at this point, for the Town of Tallinn, I like the patrol aspect of our police officers, that they're out there patrolling. You get much less of that with a supervisor. So I am happy with how it is now. Should you decide otherwise, I'm happy to implement that as well and make it work great. The sergeant setup, that'll be available to us, and that is a great, great job to have as a supervisor with the Connecticut State Police, as a resident trooper sergeant. There'll be a liner on the corner, those who want to get it, or certainly those that already endeared themselves to staff in the town as well, and would get very, very high consideration.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I know we've had plenty of discussion about the report and everything like that. Just curious about the background upon that. That's all I have for now.
Any other questions? Go ahead. Cal, are you there?
Yeah, just to have, Jake, if you added, if you added a sergeant, would you remove, sorry, somebody that's a step down?
Well, yes. I assumed what Lieutenant Hayward was saying, and I believe that we all understood this, I think, that we have four slots here. Three would be troopers and one would be a sergeant, or four would be troopers, preferably one administrative trooper if they can have it. So that's where we are. Again, we submitted four troopers last year. We'll submit four troopers this year. It's great that the state submits the actual cost of the trooper to us. And at this point, there is some savings. But again, when those troopers start going up, it's going to get more and more expensive. And again, my recommendation is to enjoy those savings now while we can. It's to no less patrol of our streets.
One more question, then, that I have a budget question in the book, too. So since they are young troopers, and first of all, thank you for all they do to law enforcement, all the background they're doing today, and their respective departments. But say if something happens, it would assume that they're young and they might need someone more senior, senior background to help them. Is that true? Or say if they're in town?
It's plausible. It's conjecture. It's how old does a trooper have to be to be experienced? They're all around three years. Now it's three years of patrol on their own. That's a lot. And, you know, I don't know. How long is enough?
Well, okay, I didn't know if there was a, you know, they needed something, if there was something that big happened, if they would have to call in. I don't know.
There's a level of savvy and experience that comes with time that they will have to start building up over tonight, and the sergeant would help with that.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then one question, just from the book on page 286. The food and clothing, it went up, same with it, maybe from the actual $23,908 to $1,200. Those are just the rise of costs, I assume?
Yes. I, so there's, if you look at that and the next line item, the $800, it's for, it's for different events and such. If they're buying t-shirts or if they're buying schwag, you know, that sort of thing they hand out. It's all in regards to community hours. But also, the food is for the office as well. Water, you know, you get victims in there. You get people in there, so they have, you've been, I don't know if you've been down there, but they have snacks and such available as well. Lori, is that accurate?
Yes. Okay. All right. That's good to know. Big way expenses. I've never been down. That's all I have for now. Thank you. Nothing more.
So is the person who's currently, or the trooper that's currently replaced Eklund, is it a temporary trooper? And when will we get this permanently assigned?
I think they're waiting to see the process here and how we end up here before they permanently assign somebody. We have some options available to us, and we've worked with the troop and the lieutenant to do that. You know, one of the things I thought that, you know, I might have explained this to you last week is that we have four troopers that are assigned here in the Town of Tallinn that are all not exactly senior officers with a few years' experience. I didn't select them. No one here in this room selected them. We were left out of the process. So what, you know, in essence, they're saying, we're going to pick the troopers, and we're going to pick them young, and then you'll have to have a sergeant. I understand there's a limitation. A lot of the troopers are young now. But again, one of the things I'm asking the state for is to be involved in the selection process, and this is a reason, certainly a reason why. The selection process of who are resident troopers.
Okay. Councilor Noonan has to stand up.
Hello. Can you guys hear me today? Tonight?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so apologize for not being able to be there in person tonight, but Mondays is one of those nights where I got to reign supreme over here at the household with my daughter. Brian, I did go through specifically this portion of the budget that you submitted. You know, one of the first things you said is, you know, if troopers decide to stay here in Tallinn, they'll earn more money. I think you had said that at the beginning of the meeting, but.
No, I don't believe I said that, Alex, nor would I. But go ahead.
Did I miss you even? I wasn't sure what you were saying there in the beginning about troopers.
What I started out with is that you start out, the junior troopers make less money than the senior troopers. The longer you're here, the more your seniority goes up, and the more your step increases with the state, Connecticut State Police go up.
Okay. So sorry, I misheard you on that. So without the crime-driven statistics, I definitely understand your want to have that, and I certainly agree. You know, but however, having a couple of major incidents in town this past year, you know, if we'd like to get into specifics of those, we can. The two questions I have for you is, you know, after having Lieutenant Hayward present in the room with us and advocating for a sergeant, how can we say no? And then my last question is, is if my understanding is correct, is this essentially a place to cut someone, or is this essentially a place to cut without someone losing their job?
Okay, let me start with the latter. Should there be significant cuts to the town budget? And I never ever like to say who or where I cut prior to, because I don't want my staff thinking they're going to lose their jobs.
Thank you for that, by the way.
You're welcome. This certainly would be something that would be considered along with everybody else equally. In regards to the major incidents in town, having a sergeant in here and having four more troopers, doubling our troop resident trooper staff, would not have affected those incidents in any way. In fact, for the street takeover, as you are aware, the Connecticut State Police were aware of the street takeover well in advance of it. And many of the people we're speaking about made the decisions in regards to how it was handled, as a matter of fact. And having, you know, they actually had undercovers in that operation tonight of that incident here. So they knew about it. You know, we can discuss planning and, you know, operationally, investigative planning was fantastic on their part. It was the, on the operational end, should there be an incident, that planning, obviously, probably could have been improved, but they were here. They were on it. It wasn't like it was a shortage of staff. They had people in it. So in regards to the person on midnights that bailed out of the car and into the neighborhoods off the highway, last I checked, our sergeant would not be working 11:00 at night till 7:00 in the morning. And it would not have made much of a difference, as no resident troopers responded to that until they were notified of it early in the morning, and Kevin Eklund did a good job capturing it from there. That's my opinion on both those things. What else was there? Alex, did I miss anything, sir?
I think you covered both those questions pretty sufficiently. I just wanted to get both of your answers on those. So I'm going to do my best here with the technology side and listening along to everyone else on council with the questions they may have as well. So I appreciate it, Brian. Thank you.
Thank you, Alex.
Yep.
Any other questions?
The resident troopers we have right now, please, you know, we've been talking about them being young, but none of them are trooper trainees, correct?
Not even close. No.
And I know we had asked for data at one point, which I know, I don't believe we got any data from the state police as of currently. But there's performance measures in the book, and there's actual, you know, going back to 2020, there's an estimate for 2324, and then there's anticipated for 2425. And those numbers are kind of interesting, because we go from, you know, estimated burglaries, for example, in 2324 as four, actual in 2223 is five, but their anticipated burglaries in 2425 is 20.
Lisa, where'd you get those numbers? Lori?
It's just the expected upgrade in our population with the apartments coming in, with the marijuana factories coming in, their first estimates.
Yeah, that's not, that is not any sort of next gen, which is the system, the technology they use for crime reporting and data reporting. That is not any sort of visually generated report of the Connecticut State Police. I can't imagine that that is a very cursory level look at it and not an accurate predictor in any sense. They can go either direction.
So that's computer-generated numbers based off of?
No, no, it's just estimates.
What do they base it off of that?
Expected population increases.
Who did it, Lori?
I did it.
Oh, Lori did it. Thank you.
So traffic citations are estimated to double from 400 to 800.
I have to see what you're looking at. I'm not sure. That's non-reportable matters, shall we?
So I was just looking at traffic citations. The actual for 2224 is 402, estimate for 2324 is 400, but anticipated 2425 have doubled to 800.
Yeah, I have to look at what I submitted. I wouldn't, I don't recognize it as an actual.
So the estimates are possibly wrong?
Does the anticipated doesn't look right to me?
Okay.
I would say this is a good reason for us to, again, want even more for the data. I would say this, again, totally, I expect traffic tickets to go up, coming off of COVID, coming and building up their staff, morale hopefully coming up all around across the United States, not just in Connecticut in regards to traffic stops. And seeing some grants come our way, too, for traffic enforcement, I would expect. And having the younger troopers out there, typically, they're doing more stuff than others. But I would expect that to be the case.
Sure. I just want to know if it's accurate.
Yeah, I would say no. I believe that it has to be looked at. I have to look at what I said.
It's framed out the best they can out of that office with the third of data.
Okay. I think that ends my questions.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So who submitted the department's budget?
Lori to me.
I helped fill it.
Yeah, it's against the cost from the state as well.
So within that, you excluded the sergeant role in that?
That was my fault.
I was told.
And what, and what is the estimated cost of incorporating a sergeant into the board? It's a net, it's a net cost.
Yeah, Lieutenant Hayward gave it to us at the time. Do you remember? Do you have that?
I think there was another $15,000, but it was $15,000.
$1.5?
Yeah.
Lori's got it. She's just, oh, for you know. The total annual would have been 720? Yeah. With a sergeant plus four. Oh, yeah, that's sergeant plus four. That's adding a person.
Oh, adding a person. Okay, so that would not.
I don't know if that's accurate.
Yeah, no.
That's not, 720 is not accurate for a five-man, a five-trooper department, a sergeant and four troopers. The addition of a sergeant, that's an extra trooper or an extra sergeant on top of the four troopers.
Right.
A sergeant doesn't cost $70,000. Right? And that's what the increase is.
I've done it at 128, yeah, sergeant.
128 for a sergeant. So an added sergeant would be 128 on top of the 750.
Okay, but we're talking about.
I'm sorry, on top of this.
On top of 563.
That's right. I'm sorry. Thank you.
That would be four troopers and one sergeant. That's bringing up the department one more body.
Yeah.
So I'm sorry, can you clarify that? It's 563 plus 120? Is that what I heard?
If you added a sergeant to the four troopers.
So that's 683 versus 649.
Now, if you had three troopers and a sergeant, then we'd have to cut out. Do you have that analysis? 578. Yeah, it was, it was about $15,000 difference if you brought it down to three troopers and one sergeant. But when you do, like the manager said, when you do a sergeant, you're losing someone on the streets patrolling.
So again, I got to dispute those numbers as well. The 563 is for four junior resident troopers. I don't think the sergeant makes $15,000 more than a junior resident trooper. I believe he made $15,000 more than Kevin Eklund, who was the highest paid. So I would dispute that number as well. I'm certain, I'm happy to look those numbers up.
Yeah, let's get some.
So what you want is four troopers that we have now and a sergeant. You want plus a sergeant, plus one. You want three troopers plus a sergeant. But that's easy enough. Thank you.
Oh, the 563 is an admin and three. So an admin is paid close to what Kevin was making, correct? So that's the difference. If the admin and three is what's in here, that's 563. If you went to a sergeant plus three, then yes, it would go to 578.
I'll get the hard numbers.
Yeah, thanks. I'm trying to write those.
I'm looking at it.
Um, and certainly, let's see. Oh, if anybody can refresh my memory. What was the recommendation of? I just mentioned his name, and I already forgot to check my timeline. When he came.
Ten, four.
What was his recommendation? Was it three troopers plus a sergeant, or did he recommend four troopers plus a sergeant?
I'm sure at the minimum, three and one, and I'm sure he'd be happy to refer to four and one as well.
Okay. Yeah?
Yes.
So I have some questions. That's fine. Have we gotten the statistics that Lieutenant said we could, he would get to us? Have those numbers come into your office yet?
No, with a caveat. In order to get that data, we'd really have to sit down and decide what data do we want, what format do we want? And to do that, we want whoever's going to be the permanent replacement to be here. Learn it, one, you got to get, they got to get training in next gen, which I'm already assured they'll get. So no, you know, we kind of, once we decide, I will be pushing to get as much as I can and work through that data.
Okay. Have they signed the MOU?
No.
Have you heard anything more about the MOU?
No, I'm happy to reach out again. I think they're waiting, again, waiting to see what happens here.
Okay. Taking a step back, how are the costs for the resident state trooper program determined?
You mean, what's, how is their salary determined?
I believe that the state pays for some of this, too, right?
Yes, part of the fringe, right?
No, they pay 85, we only pay one for two, right? 85%? Two at 85% and two at 100%.
Okay, so the state pays 15%
For two troopers.
For two troopers, and we pay the 85% for those two, and 100% of the other two. Does that include the fringe, or is it just the salary?
Everything.
Okay, good to know. Bill, Councilor Uchek asked a question about if our resident state troopers needed some oversight or needed to get some guidance from a senior officer. I think that when the lieutenant was here, he explained that they could call in and probably would be calling into Troop C for oversight, especially in more complex cases. Is that correct?
Let me be clear. They all have a sergeant right now.
Yeah.
Okay, just not one dedicated to this town.
Okay.
Every sergeant, every trooper that's on the street has a sergeant over them at all times.
Okay.
And a lieutenant, a captain, major, lieutenant colonel.
Okay, so they do have supervision right now from a sergeant out of Troop C?
Sure.
Okay. And then just again, to clarify, if we were to determine that we wanted to go with a sergeant and three troopers, right now, we have four right here in town, right, four resident state troopers. If we went to a sergeant and three, would that resident state trooper that we no longer would have here, would they lose their job?
No, no.
They're tempered.
Yeah, the one that is assigned here is on a TTY, temporary assignment here. Any trooper, if we were to decide, and this would never happen, but if council were to come to me and say, we can't afford four troopers, go down to one. Those three troopers do not lose their jobs and get, collect unemployment. They go right back into the patrol shuffle at the troop or land in another spot somewhere where there's an opening, and given the staffing levels are low, there's openings, there's a lot of openings. So no, they don't lose their job.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. I appreciate it. Can you talk to us a little bit more about grants for traffic enforcement? You've mentioned that a few times. How do those grants work? Do they come into the town, or are they coming into Troop C?
You know, there's a lot of different ones that come in. Katie, and we want some come in from federal. Lori, do you know of any, or Lisa, do you know of any specifically? I know that, go ahead.
Yeah, we do the DUI enforcement grant, and Lori is very involved with putting it together. That's federal and comes right into the town. And then we have a rural grant that is also federal that comes right into the town.
So it goes into the town general fund?
The DUI grant does. The rural one, the rural, I have trouble saying that. That we do $5,000 at a time till we hit 50 grand, and that one is paid by the state. Both grants are paid out of the grant fund. They don't go into the general fund? I don't, we, I don't give Laura the numbers for the rural. They're both managed in a separate fund, so we can keep track of the expense that goes out related to that. They're not budgeted as part of it. The only part in the general fund for the expense is if there is a co-share in that $10,000 overtime. We've been fortunate the past few years to have 100% grant, correct? All right, so, but in some cases. in some cases, if there's a co-share, some of that ten thousand would have to be used for that versus the other overtime needs of the department and it have to be managed. Um, but the the grant revenue and the grant expenditures are segregated with a separate project code in a different fund for grants.
Okay, so do the grant funds help pay this department budget?
No. They pay for the overtime that's required to perform the enforcement actions required under the grant.
Okay.
All overtime.
The grants are for overtime. Okay, thank you. That that makes sense. I think that were, those were all of my questions. Does anyone wanna go around?
Um, Brian, can you refresh my memory? Did Lieutenant, when he came in, did we talk about four troopers plus a sergeant? I thought that the, his recommendation anyways was three troopers plus a sergeant.
That's what I, that's how I remembered it too. But again, I don't, I didn't take notes on it. But I entertain all options.
Okay, um, and the second question I have is, I know you're saying that we're we're not necessarily anticipating getting more data until we have someone permanently assigned, either an admin or sergeant.
Yeah.
Is there a way to try to push back and try to get some data because it's hard to make the decision about whether we actually need a sergeant if we don't have any sufficient information to make that decision?
That's a deep dive. No, would be my response. The only way to, the only way to, we have to look at historical. I mean, let's go back ten years to when we, when we had X amount of troopers, you know, and, you know, five years and has stuff started to go up and hasn't started to go down. It's a deep, it's something we have to start building out now so that we can go back and look back on things. I I don't know if they can give you data to determine when, when, as people in this room know, they can give you data to say, you know, anything. That is a deep dive that I don't think we can get.
Okay.
And then it would require analysis as well.
Okay, so the information we have now is what we'll be using to make the decision whether or not to have sergeant.
The information we have now, if you allow me to expound, uh, is perception. Does the town perceive itself as safe? We have no data to to say we're less safe or more safe. It's it's perception, you know, and I talked to Alex, talked a lot about perception and that, you know, people don't, you know, some people don't feel safe. I can tell you with with great confidence, the town is very safe. It 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 just, as social media has it now, it exasperates um everything that happens. We are safer than so many of our neighbors and so many other people uh in the state, but again, it doesn't matter if people don't feel safe. Um, and so we wanna give them the perception of feeling safe as best we can. I don't, I, Chris, I don't know if we need one resident trooper. When I was with the state, the 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 Colonel and the Commissioner both said, why do you have so many resident state troopers with the the troop right in town? And laughed and and this was before I was the town manager. And I'm like, I don't know, but you know, when I got here, I'm like, I'm gonna look into it. Um, we don't know how many cops we need, cuz we have no data. It's completely anecdotal. But I think four is a decent uh number for us to have. If we had no resident troopers, we, like the town of Wellington, one townover has zero resident troopers. Are they any more or less safe than we are? I I would say during the residents' troopers hours, they are probably less safe than we are. Is it a, uh, uh, it, does that affect prime data? We don't know, because we don't get any data. So there's there's just so many unknowns. Um, but perception and perception of whether we're safe or not falls on all of your shoulders. What are your constituents saying? Um, and do they tell you that they feel safe? And, you know, I guess that's what we have to consider in the absence of um actual data of whether we are safe or aren't safe. I can tell you, we are safe, but when I say something like that, you know, karma comes fast, so um it's perception.
But just to be clear, I I I think four is a good number. I wouldn't recommend going down to zero, so, but thanks, Ryan.
So we'll step away from that line for a moment. Um, the communications line, I was just curious, cuz I noticed it's gone up quite a bit in recent years. Just what's what's in that line and so why has it gone from maybe in twenty thousand and twenty four, twenty three to now it's twenty four or six and those go up a little bit again?
I it it's, they submit a budget, I believe TN does, but it's, the the basic way is it's based on calls and population. And it's it's rated, basically all the towns are applied to the same formula, uh, and that's where ours comes in. Have we had TN in, TN in in front of everybody yet, the new council?
What what is TN? Sorry.
Our nine one one calls center. It's, don't ask me why they call it TN. But um, it's basically our, it's a communication center for much of this part of the state. We're lucky that we could roll our quarter out the front door and it'll land in their parking lot over there, so they're not close to us. And that, you know, we 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 work, we help each other a lot.
So is that like the fee to support that operation? It's not like advertising or something like?
No, no, it's strictly for their ser- their nine one one services. And in fact, I wouldn't mind, for those who haven't seen it, I would schedule a walkthrough over there. It's pretty impressive to have their command center um right here in town. It works out pretty well.
Yeah. I remember doing that, it's like mission control.
You already did it.
Yeah, a time ago.
Alright.
Cool, yeah.
I think we could do it again.
Alright.
Alright, thank you for that clarification.
You're good?
Yep.
Any other questions? Oh, Councilor Newton has his hand up.
Yeah, so can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Uh, Brian, so the proposed budget was to maintain four troopers and uh add a sergeant.
No, sir. The the proposed budget was uh four troopers. I didn't, given the, given the, and that was my recommendation. Uh, I asked of Lori, uh, but understanding it go either way, whatever council decides um is is fine by me. Uh, but given how expensive everything is and everything's gone up everywhere else, this is the one place we can show a chunk of savings. I left it at the 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 status quo of police protection that we had last year to this year.
Okay, but that, but that's what Lieutenant Hayward was asking for. That was what I was trying to clarify, cuz I think uh
I think he was asking for one, one sergeant and three troopers.
That's not the information that I received, cuz I think Councilman um Moran just asked a question. I just was trying to clear that up. That was not the information that I had received. So maybe that's something that we could bring to fruition and and clear through information?
Yeah, I mean, I, we were all in the meeting with Lieutenant Hayward. I'm happy to provide the the cost for each and for your considerations. Um, for one and, one and four and one and three. I mean, you already have the number for four.
Thank you.
I was trying to say, when you do that, um, Brian, maybe put in the description.
You want the job description for resident trooper sergeant and resident trooper.
You know what I mean, just.
Yes, concur.
Everybody else wants that, but maybe that's I'm not sure.
Any other questions? Okay. Sounds like we can move on to the next.
Second. Thanks, Lori.
Thanks, Lori.
Thank you. Great job. Alright, Scott Lappin, if you wanna come up and uh said, Lisa, we're jumping to Department of Public Works. Our DPW um is is, I believe, our second biggest department in the town after the Board of Ed. And having worked in, I'll just say, other places, I can see the exposure to town government that public works bring when they're not functioning properly. Uh, to this, I I I, in my opinion, having worked for the state and other places, um, our public works is is uh above and beyond uh where I've seen uh elsewhere. No discredit to anybody else, but uh we do a great job. Uh, sitting here is Director Scott Lappin. You all met him. Um, and he's in charge of uh basically the parks and facilities and the highway, the two main uh portions of of our public works department. We also handle the sewer system. Uh, that's the water pollution control. And uh Scott is also our local traffic authority, uh, after some training that he's taken. Um, was that through Yukon? That you took that? So like when there's a, you know, um, decision whether we need an extra stop sign or or something along those lines, Scott's um who we we work with. And they support the Board of Ed on a lot of things as well, um, field servicing and um some some uh snow removal nuances as well. Move on, go ahead, jump one forward. Okay, so this is, this was a comparison of the three towns, and if you go through the pages there, you're gonna start to see that Talon does pretty well based on what we have and what they have to take care of. And when you look at catch bases and cemeteries, um, we're doing pretty well with the number of uh of um staff that we have and what we're getting, beg for the buck wise. One of, you know, we 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 had a uh public works consultant come in. Um, and we've tried to to monitor the recommendations as best we can. I, as you are all painfully aware of, I hate spending money um unnecessarily on anything and I'm, especially apparatus. Moving in the coming months, I will have bad news in regards to old apparatus spending habits um and uh looking to fix that. So understand that I am, for lack of a better word, policing the the apparatus uh as best I can with the assistance of Director Lappin, who pointed out um certainly some failures of past administration um and found some failures of past administration uh that we'll get into uh down the road. Nuts and bolts wise, a hundred and twenty four plus miles of improved roads. That's a fancy way of saying paved roads. Uh, and then eight point eight two miles of unpaved roads. Fifty five large, sixty six small pieces of equipment, although I could certainly throw some numbers at you with that based on uh work with Director Lappin and what I have been doing. I'm looking to bring some of those numbers down, I believe. It's actually sixteen municipal buildings uh there, four cemeteries, a hundred and thirty five acres of grounds in our parks and our fields to include our uh town green. Uh, moving into buildings and uh looking at uh some, there's some pictures there of some of the places that we maintain. And you can see the the high school, you know, the field that that are are, you know, when I got here, they were getting ready to replace that um turf field up at the high school. And um we put a stop to that. And thank thankfully, with the work between the Board of Ed and uh DPW, uh, they're doing a good job with the maintenance and repairs uh of the field network, obviously extending its life value. I believe I have it about five years out or six years out in the capital plan. And I will, I I promise you in a couple of years, I'll go out there and sniff around there again and 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 take a look at it, cuz I go to unfortunately, uh, all the high schools in the region and and ours is the best. Our field is the best, in my opinion. Um, it's fantastic. Uh, one of the big things we do is obviously maintaining our uh roads here in town, and we discussed pavement management here again. I'll kinda go through the process here. We don't just willy nilly pick what roads are gonna get uh paved this year. We hire an engineering firm and they do uh pavement condition assessments. Uh, and and analyze that a lot of things are based on, you know, the traffic that goes on that road, the the condition that it's in. They use um uh pictures, computer generated images. Uh, and with with all the information, a lot of factors, they come up with a an index uh and and then a five year plan. And so we had one in uh twenty twenty, we'll get another one in in twenty twenty five. Um, in regards to what's gonna, where our paving is going. Keep in mind that uh from when the five year plan started to where we are now in our last uh referendum for um uh pavement, what do we call it? Road paving referendum. Uh, we would get a million dollars um a year, right? To get to do X amount of miles and uh that, we're not getting that. The the money doesn't go as far as it used to, obviously, uh with the costs of uh paving. And some, so you can see some terms in regards to paving and the and the 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 condition index that they have for it. Through the pictures, but really the map is um where we're at. Green and blue is good. Red and orange is bad, and um that kind of um directs us on where we start paving. That's not to say that it's entirely driven by this data and uh the by a computer selection. We have worked it out whether we actually have a, you know, let's discuss this and can we, is there something in dire need that we need to get worked in here? Uh, to try to, to try to um persuade any streets that are really in bad shape. So let's move into the budget details. Stuff out here. And we'll start with parks and facilities. So the budget went up about forty one thousand dollars, um, and that is, uh, you know, it sounds like a lot, but on top of the one point a six million dollar uh budget, um, it's only, it's a two point six percent from the prior year. Um, Director Lappin came to me uh with a budget and of course, and unfortunately, I cut a a lot of stuff uh out of his budget. He surrendered a a DPW laborer a few years ago with the promise of getting it back into the following year. Um, and that promise, including uh by my, by my decision, uh, it's thus far. Um, that includes this year. The the consultant recommended an admin to keep track of equipment, repairs, parts, um, and all that data. We, I did not add that. Again, everything's going up everywhere. I can't, I I can't add, I can't look everyone in the eye in this town and 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 throw that kinda stuff in here on this year. I'll wait for a a better year when I can get that in there, fingers crossed. Hasn't happened yet. Uh, salary of that forty one thousand, uh, thirty nine uh thousand, thirty nine plus is is the contractual obligations. Keep in mind, uh, we did a Teamsters contract this year and then our utility, which is uh electric water sewer, uh went up as well. When the contract goes up for uh salary, the overtime goes up as well. You see that increase. Um, we increased the two thousand dollars uh to what we want. We're adding two thousand dollars into the Crandall's infrastructure. Uh, also, as you saw in other departments, the AED bad, the defibrillator batteries um were a big cost as well, but again, you look at those costs based on the total budget, the size of this department, uh, those those are miniscule, but we're doing the best we can uh to keep them down. Uh, we're really, we're really putting a focus on Crandall's as we got so much positive feedback from the 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 big improvements that we made uh that DPW made, and we're gonna build on that. This year, we look to, uh, we have some capital improvements way down the road for Crandall's as well. I'm ready to move into the budget, should you have any questions. And Scott Lappin is here as well.
Do we have any questions on parks and facilities?
Certainly. So my only concern here is the overtime. When I look at that compared to the actuals for twenty twenty three, again, I don't like looking budgeting like it, because it doesn't give you a true picture of your your year. So I look at twenty three, overtime's only twenty one thousand, now we're going to fifty one. That's, you know, obviously far more than a hundred percent increase in overtime. So how how can we justify that?
So, uh, before I bring in Director Lappin, I asked the same thing um in the meeting. The field usage, from what I remember, has gone up to the, instead of one or two seasons, we're at three seasons for a lot of the sports. Um, their their maintenance went up for that. Uh, what else, Scott?
Well, why wouldn't that be in regular repair this year? You you obviously know that's going to happen. Why is it not accounted for? You schedule your people accordingly, so that you're not building this excessive overtime.
I'm happy to add the labor and build it into payroll to cover that, to get the extra hours, cuz there's X amount of hours that increase. But Scott, do you wanna add anything?
Right, there are, um, during the summertime, specifically from like mid-May till mid-October, we go to four ten hour days. We get more production. But in the parks and facilities, we can't do that. We have to split the crew, so we have half Monday through Thursday, half Tuesday through Friday. And there are a lot of times where I'm bringing in extra people on those Mondays and Fridays, so we can catch up with um the field use. When you have tournaments over the weekend, you come in on Monday, you have uh, you know, four guys in, plus the summer help that we have. It takes a good part of the day just to pick up the trash that's left in these these areas, along with relining the fields, going out weed whacking, four cemeteries, trying to mow these cemeteries so everything looks presentable. It uh, it becomes a a challenge. Last year, I think we worked. Uh, I would say five weeks straight where everybody was doing ten hours of overtime.
So, and I and I can. So, and I, and I can, and I appreciate the question. Again, I asked the same thing. What other nuance I'll add to this? We all see social media, we all see the cemeteries. I get phone calls from friends, you know, right down the street. My kids having baseball up at the, you know, off of the south of the road and, and the grasses. It's a disgrace and the town and this and that. And, you know, and I call him and he does the best he can to, you know, to get it done, but we, we certainly do see, we've seen it on social media, um, that they fall behind, uh, in, in the summer months.
But, I mean, all the things you mentioned, none of that's new since twenty-three, twenty-four, we still have all those cemeteries, we still have ball fields, we still have parks. I mean, yet we kept our, we kept our overtime down in twenty-three, twenty-two, twenty-three. So I don't see anything new. It's not like we've got a new park, it's not like we have a new cemetery. I mean, it's all the same old stuff we've always had. With basically the same man hours, working, working the same amount.
I would say for these seasons.
But the, the wages have gone up. So with those wages, the, the overtime rate has gone up.
Yeah, that's, this is a hundred, this is an over a hundred percent increase versus a four percent increase in salaries. Pretty big difference, just in overtime. I just think you should look that a little closer to our budget.
That's, that's their entire, that's their entire overtime budget. That's snow and you know, seasonal stuff during the summertime. If I, if I, you know, I'd be happy to cut the overtime down, but I don't want to have to come back here in January and say, we're out of overtime money and, you know. It's a, it's, you know, it's a best guess.
Yeah, I understand.
I mean, we've had, we've had two relatively mild winters so far. We, our salt shed is full. We have, we have plenty of, uh, um, overtime money left. There's, you know, but if it had been a bad winter, you know.
Yeah, things can change. Okay, that's my own thoughts.
Okay. Other questions?
I just wanted to follow up on Joe's question. I mean, would it make more sense to hire the per diem person than the busy seasons and paying all the overtime? Or hurting me in some sort of, this is laughing, but if it's year after year and you got a thing going on in the summer, maybe just, that's just, we look at it.
We hire, we hire seasonal help. We typically hire four. And we get two out of the cemetery, two out of our operating budget. We have all we can do to get four people to come work here. And those are kids out of college.
Just to come to work in town.
Yes. And even with our, our full timers, we'll put out an advertisement and we've been, uh, better this year because we've expanded our, um, advertising. We've gone to Indeed, we've gone to some other routes. And we got some, some big candidates. Prior to that, we would get two or three applicants for one position where surrounding towns are getting, you know, seventy-five to a hundred. It's, it's kind of hard to advertise if the town pays a good amount towards the insurance that these guys, these people get. And that's on top of their salary. So their salary looks lower than surrounding towns because that's, that's not in their site. I don't think that's an attract to them, but this year we put in that, you know, they were getting full benefits included. So it, it's helped. But it's, it's difficult. There's a lot of jobs out there right now and people want to come work for a municipality.
Right. Okay. So that wouldn't really help if you did something like that.
No, that's why we're trying to get the full-time position back so that we can, you know, utilize them correctly.
How much would a full-time position cost?
I think it's somewhere in the neighborhood of forty-six thousand, forty-eight thousand dollars plus their benefits. For labor? I didn't think it was that high, but they could be a little higher now. I don't have a clear.
There's fringe benefit costs that are, they get year nine insurance.
So I guess that was kind of my, I mean, that's a little higher than overtime, but.
If you look at the difference, well, that payroll also includes that clerk too, doesn't it? Yeah. You see, the department request was nine twenty-one, that included a labor and a clerk. So it's it's kind of hard to figure out what that down went with, but the clerk was part of it. Thirty is in my value.
Yes. It was twenty-five R G.
Now, Scott, you were asking about some authority or requirements. Just something to consider, I think a full-time person for
I'll keep trying.
I'll keep plugging. Thank you, Katie.
I wanted just to comment, I just would second Joe's, Joe's suggestion, we just relook at that over timeline, but that said. I, I appreciate Brian and you, Scott, for trying to, you know, keep the budget, you can give them the times are tough. But have we looked at if we were to hire an additional laborer, how much that would offset like our overtime? Now, I get that every year it can fluctuate based on weather and things of that nature, but I know you were saying it's, you know, forty-six, forty-eight or whatever it was plus benefits. I mean, hiring one laborer, what is that like? How much would that bring down our overtime? If you don't know now, it's fine, but yeah, it'd just be interesting to know, uh, sort of to call in complaints.
Um, another thing you have to factor in is all winter long, we're very fortunate that very few of these guys, these individuals take vacation time. So come summertime, we have people who've been here for many, many years. They've got four weeks vacation. They've got to use it or, you know, they're going to lose it because we don't, you know, try not to pay out. You know, that's not what it's there for. And when you have a crew such as the Highway Division with, uh, twelve individuals, and we get a lot of guys going out, we have to, you know, we have to fill in those spots. We have contractors who come in to do our paving, for example. They want to work five days. I have to bring some people in on Fridays to work with them, but it's, it's our best bet because we say we can't work on Friday. And they go to another town, then we have to wait for them to come back for us.
Thanks, Scott.
I have a discussion. Uh, Counselor Newton?
Yeah, can you guys hear me? So Brian, just for, uh, public record, my own record. So if there's, you're advocating for an increase of forty-one thousand dollars for Public Works. And a sixty-eight thousand dollars, seven hundred decrease for Public Safety.
Uh, I'm not saying I'm advocating for it. The, the union contract tied my hands, uh, to it with the Teamsters. Uh, that, that, that was thirty-nine thousand of the forty-one thousand was the, so, so essentially counsel advocated for it when they approved the Teamsters contract.
Okay, thank you.
I have a few questions. I just want to, let me make sure I'm clear. Adding another laborer would not eliminate the overtime line. And this department has winter responsibilities, but they're not paving, they're not paving the roads.
They, they have to plow the, all of the schools.
Okay.
We do the sidewalks of the schools.
Yeah.
We do the firehouses. Um, and that's the staff of the, all the municipal buildings. And that's the staff of, uh, the people.
Okay. And they do a great job. So thank you, which, I mean, for that, for that. Um, in the description for this department, it says that, um, the Parks and Facilities Division provides maintenance for all municipal fields, including those in the Board of Ed. The current cost associated with this income service is approximately three hundred forty-five thousand dollars and change. Is that for both Board of Ed and municipal fields or just one or the other?
You remember.
That, that's, I think, is the Board of Education portion. Any kind is the, the, uh, the share that we have to report to the state of what it costs for them to provide the services to the Board of Ed.
Okay. And this is part of our contract with, or the MOU with the Board of Ed for maintenance of those. So we don't budget for it. It's just a calculation that needs to get, uh, reported.
Okay. Well, it's part of his budget for the staffing.
Sure. Yes. That, that's part of what their, their, uh, their jobs are.
Right.
Part of their responsibility. Okay. I noticed that the building improvement and materials line was slightly reduced from last year. I'm wondering, um, obviously, uh, not immediate, but looking forward, would we expect building improvement materials, that line to go down with a new building for Perks and Rec?
That's, that's just a lineup. That's for all of their building improvements, whether it's at Crandall's Lodge or, you know, that's, that's our material that we purchased to do
Okay.
uh, these different projects.
Okay. So like mulch?
No, mulch, mulch is a separate line item. That's agricultural and custodial.
Okay.
But the building materials are like the bridges that we're repairing right now in the ADA walkway. We don't have that designated to, um, what we'll call recreational facilities. Instead of carrying a line item in every building for building materials.
Yeah.
We, we hold it under Parks and Facilities.
Okay. Thank you.
It only went down for one reason.
It only what? Yeah.
It went down for one reason.
It's his fault. I saw you first out there.
Lots of blue marks on Scott's
Yeah.
page over here.
I think those were my thoughts. Thank you.
Fair, fine question. So did you say that the, the overtime budget also had the, the plowing overtime in it? Was I, I mishear that?
Yes, that's for, for the parks and facilities.
Right now, yeah, not for streets and roads, just for.
Thank you.
More questions?
No, and I, I apologize. I didn't look at my sheet, but is this budget sufficient to meet the project goals and objectives for fiscal year twenty-three? Twenty, ooh, twenty-five?
That's every year.
I do ask that every year.
Last year I said maybe.
Yeah.
This year it's still a maybe.
Still a maybe.
Yes, we, we, you know, I mean, and I'm not trying to be funny, but this year it was put up the ice skating rink.
Yeah.
It's do the grass mats. And, you know, and we, we try to accommodate everybody's needs.
Yeah.
But when we do that, something else suffers.
Yeah.
It can't be a lining, nine baseball fields in a day, you know, with two guys on fields and so many in the cemeteries. And then get a call that we have to.
Great. Thank you. I do, uh, I do appreciate that a lot gets asked of you and that you find a way to.
We have a good, we have a good crew of people and they're always willing to work, but we can always split them so much.
Absolutely. Understood. Thank you.
Yes, for, for next year, just think about it, you know, or even this year, however, um, we keep adding things and adding and adding, adding. And, you know, by the way, make Crandall's nice and, 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 you know, put the grass mats down, pick them up, move them. And this, like you said, it's just, I keep, you know, I see something on social media, can you go get this? Can you go get that? And, you know, you can see how lively and jovial Scott is. When I ask him something like that, he's even more lively and jovial. So, uh, it's a lot of fun.
Glad you're having fun.
It is actually. He's great. I couldn't be happier with our DPW director.
Appreciate that.
You're welcome.
All right. Let's get going to the next thing.
Moving forward. Streets and roads. Also a big one, a total budget, two million, uh, one hundred and thirty-five thousand, seven hundred and seven dollars, an increase of two point two percent, forty-six thousand dollars, just over almost forty-seven thousand. This, uh, most, there was, there was a reduction in the amount of materials, uh, to count for ice and snow removal, about twenty-eight thousand due to lowering price for our treated salt. Uh, and also keep in mind that we've had two good years in a row with the salt, uh, and so the number's dropping. Also, uh, the payroll was increased by thirty-nine, again, same, uh, Teamsters, uh, for that, this as well, which again affects the overtime, fuel and oil. Um, and our materials and roads, uh, infrastructure account rose by, uh, almost, you're just over eight thousand dollars. Uh, that, that's, uh, some of the major things, streets and traffic light control section. Uh, the utilities account decreased by forty-six hundred, but the equipment rental went up by twenty-three thousand, uh, due to the increase, uh, the cost of painting traffic lines and, uh, road materials and markers. Uh, accounts for the signs and posters decreased by five hundred dollars. I'm happy to talk about anything. And again, Director Lappin's here.
Questions?
Yeah, so also the rental one, I have a couple of questions about that. Um, so one, you said, like sixty-three thousand or sixty-one nine? Is that mostly that street painting thing or are there like a bunch of stuff happening there?
Yes, it's, um, it's almost fifty thousand dollars of paint our entire town wants because the paint has gone up. And that's going to W O line and on some of the roads where we can do the shoulder striping.
Okay. So paint is like included in the rental?
Lots that have to do this.
Okay, okay. I was just wondering if, if it keeps going up so much for the rental, you know, where it never makes sense to go and capitalize on it like that, but.
Yeah, that's, that's a difficult thing to do. I mean, if you've ever seen one of these line painters, it's as big as a garbage truck is. All these big tanks, paint, the glass, beeps. And you have to get, hope the guy is right on. Not right on, not watching his phone.
So we just contract that service?
That's true. Yeah, we, we go through, uh, either the state or the law.
Okay. So it's just a paper, fee for service almost, not necessarily like renting.
No, no, it's, it's, it's the, the title of the account that it's in doesn't do it any justice.
Okay. That, that's, let me explain. All right. Thanks for explaining that. Appreciate that. That's all for now.
Other questions?
I want to follow up on Jacob's question. It, did we, are we anticipating painting more? Like why, why did it go up so much?
The cost of paint has gone up.
Okay.
Last year, our, uh, painting budget was cut some.
Okay.
And we only painted, um, major roads in any of the, uh, the roads that we paved last year were in neighborhoods, so we didn't have to do any of those. But we have to, we had, uh, you guys are all aware of the, what used to be the inn being hit three different times. And I had a couple of traffic engineers come out and we stood there and said, what can we do with this intersection? And it was the Chevron signs. It was the added stop sign. But as they stood there and they looked at it, they said, you really need to paint your, your center lines. Ran out of money. And that's when I, when I came to Brian, I said, look, I know it's a big hit, but if we don't do it and something happens, we're going to be, you know, under the watchful eye after being told we should do it. You know, it's a huge liability if, uh, you know, yeah, if an attorney gets a hold of it, they say, well, you didn't do what you're supposed to do.
How often do we repaint the lines?
Every year.
It is every year.
It's, it used to, they used to last longer when you had oil-based paint. They don't make, they don't do oil-based paint now. It's either latex or epoxy. And epoxy is probably three times as much and it lasts for about four years.
Thank you.
Questions?
I'll, I'll go to my, my overtime line here. Um, so this one's clearly not as consistent as the Parks and Rec will in a year. Uh, because I can see in twenty-twenty-two, it jumped up huge. So it must've been a major snow, uh, snow year, a lot, a lot of overtime on that. Uh, but I just asked again because it's doubling compared to twenty-twenty-three, um, that we just sort of take a look at it and see.
Sure. I made an adjustment. Of what was asked already, but I'm happy to look again if we have to. Of what was asked already, but I'm happy to look again if we have to cut, um, an obvious spot. And I don't think I said that before, the previous one, if if we if we have to cut, um, that'd be a spot.
Hopefully with the understanding that if we have a bad winter.
Yeah.
Guys will welcome me with open arms and such.
I'm sure, yeah, I know this one's definitely a little harder to gauge than the other than the other department for sure.
Good?
Yeah.
Other questions? I I have a couple of questions, um. With the purchase of a grader, where are we seeing that savings?
We did not have the grader at the time this budget was submitted.
Okay.
Okay, we do have the grader now.
Yeah.
Um, it's being gone through.
Yeah.
It was in fairly good shape, but they're going through replacement warning, hoses, changing the filters and what have you. We hope to have it out within another few weeks. Realistically, we still have to buy calcium.
Sure.
And spread the calcium, but there is a save, we should see savings in that line item because we're not gonna be just pushing gravel around, we're gonna be reclaiming it.
Okay.
And using it again.
Okay, so which line?
Which line?
Yeah, you said we'd see a savings in that line.
That's.
And I was wondering, which line?
Yeah, it's road materials.
There's a twenty thousand dollar reduction there.
So the the cost we were paying to outsource the grader is in that line too? That we no longer have to do?
Road materials and markers down nineteen thousand.
Well, it's all combined again. Get the whole four hundred and thirty-four thousand.
Yeah, there's there's fifty-five thousand dollars set aside, of which roughly twenty-five thousand dollars was, um, for the grading of the roads. So there would be roughly twenty-five thousand dollars that we should be able to cut out of there.
Okay, already nineteen was our nineteen thousand was already.
That might have been solved actually though, right? That was solved.
That was solved.
Looking at my notes.
So we could, we could conceivably bring the roads and material markers budget down by another twenty-five thousand dollars and not negatively impact the budget of this department. As I'm always looking for more places, does that include the rental too, or just, we we outsourced one grade, one, uh, if I remember correctly, we would do an outsource of the grader, come through one time every year. And then we would, you guys would, um, use materials to kind of patch it the best you can. The twenty-five thousand dollars in materials, does that include the outsourcing of the one? Grader to come.
Twenty-five thousand was for the the grader to come to our town.
Okay.
Grade the roads once.
Okay.
The remaining thirty thousand was for material.
True.
For calcium.
Yeah.
I've already, um, worked out a deal with one of our neighboring towns to, um, once we're done, to commit and spray the roads for us with a calcium-like product, which tightens them up, keeps the dust down. Um, and it's, uh, you know, give and take.
Yeah.
You do a little help down there.
Okay, so is there more savings to be found on materials, I know?
I wouldn't say that at this point, I mean, it's brand new, you gotta give it a year to develop a little history, but
Okay.
So I don't know what it's gonna cost, they they don't have a tank to store the materials, so they bring in a tanker. They'll do their roads, we'll spray our roads. Um.
Okay.
Knowing that we're gonna grade it multiple times, I don't know how many times you really wanna spray them.
Yeah.
Because, uh, you know, if we have to regrade every time, it's a waste of, uh,
Yeah.
You know, the calcium.
Understood, okay, um. The under our program objectives and goals in our book, uh, it says that one of the objectives for next year is to resurface town-owned roads that the fund allows, including additional projects in the third year of the five-year, five-million-dollar road fund, but next year isn't the third year, right, it's the last year?
It's two, two, fourth year or the fifth year.
Okay, so could we just update that in the town council budget?
Can you update your book? Is that two fifty-three?
Yes. That's the blood that starts resurface. Um, in program accomplishments, it says that it talks about the electronics recycling program. Is that really part of the streets and roads department?
Yes and no, Mike Wilkinson sets it up, he oversees it.
Yeah.
But we have to send two people out for, um, to make sure, because it's on our school property.
Yeah.
And for the past couple of years, they've complained that, um, it hasn't been left in the best condition.
Okay.
So we're gonna have two people there.
Okay.
And that's, that's probably one of the driving costs for the overtime.
Sure, got it, um. Okay, those were my questions, is anyone else have any questions, my question, okay, sounds like we can move on to the next. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I do have my one question, is this budget sufficient for FY twenty-five program objectives?
I'm pretty confident this one is, this one is good.
Thank you.
Let's see, let's wait for it, decide if you can pack more.
Mr. Foley passed away in two thousand and twelve, but, uh, thank you, Brian, you're just. Ready to move on?
Yes, thank you.
Scott, you're all set, I believe, right, is that it for you or?
No, refuse and recycling isn't there, but white handles, you've already got that.
We already took care of it.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Next up is human services. We have our director, Beverly, to jump in and answer any questions you may have. I did see Teresa, uh, there she is on, uh, Zoom there as well. That's the assistant director. This is Teresa's first budget, this is Teresa's first budget to be produced. All right, um, again, this is Beverly, our human services director. Our human services budget, three hundred and eighty-six thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars, an increase of three thousand, three hundred and thirty-six dollars, a very welcome point eight percent or eighty-seven percent, uh, increase uh, from the prior year. Uh, it was payroll increase, uh, three thousand, two hundred and five due to negotiated raises with staff. Um, programs, materials increased by two hundred and forty-six dollars. Um, and dues and memberships decreased by one fifty, happy to answer any questions you may have.
I'll pull you to chat, please.
Welcome, Bev, um, so let's then jump right to two twenty-four. It looks like everything went up, not everything, but a few things went up as far as people needing more services. Um, energy, food pantry, case management. Um, so you see an incline, obviously you see an incline of residents needing more assistance.
So your question is, I'm sorry, is my hearing?
Oh, no.
Are you seeing an increase in residents needing more assistance? Yeah, yeah, we're seeing people, I mean, I've been here obviously a very long time, but I'm seeing new faces coming in. Uh, people have moved to the community or hearing about, especially, um, for fuel assistance, the food pantry, uh, winters rebate, or just trying to come in to apply for Husky benefits, that would be our. Um, yeah, I think too, even, you know, in the past, and we're getting a better job at keeping numbers doing the past, like, um, we did a hundred and eighty-four, um, fuel applications, but with that, we had over, um, two, two hundred and forty contacts with people, you know, calling them about fuel assistance. When the state gave more money, we called them all, ordering oil for them through the access agency. So there's more interaction with all these programs now as well.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, just noticed that, and I think someone said that the poverty rate has gone up a little bit in Tallinn, is that correct?
Sorry.
The poverty rate has gone up a little bit in Tallinn?
For Tallin, for Tallinn itself?
I thought I heard it was.
Some of, some of the entitlement programs, yes.
Okay.
They usually raise every year.
Okay, so you're seeing increase, is it because of population and, you wanna talk louder? Yes, I'm sorry, so is it partly because the, um, uh, population is increasing with age? Is that partly around single families or senior citizens?
A lot are increases with families.
Okay.
And whether it's a better job we're doing, letting people know about the programs that are out there, but a a lot, especially the fuel assistance programs, and and yes, the elderly population are coming through the doors too. So I think it's almost kind of equal.
Okay, and we're, we, on the mental health task force, I think we talked about using the Hockenham Valley more with the mental, is it with the mental health?
Yeah, we're doing more referrals to them, and we'll, um, after the budget passes, uh, Trace and I will be working with, uh, Brian on a model for prevention specialists.
Okay.
We wanted to get through this process.
Yeah, no, it's great, um, for this section, I think. That's pretty tight, but yeah, I've been Teresa, um, and your staff downstairs. Amazing, and see the increase of people coming to your office is more overwhelming.
And, you know, we're fully staffed now, and and that's been helpful as far, and I have great staff.
Yeah, I'm sure, yeah, okay, that's all I have.
I'm not sure if this, this, we're here as the senior center, but you mentioned how like people were coming in for help with Husky and things of that nature. So do you all help people sort of like navigate them through like how to apply to these things, like even Oregon sixty in town is not a resource?
Yeah, oh, constantly, we we screen everybody, and if we're, if they're eligible for a program, we we sign them up for it. We, you know, like, if they're eligible for a benefit to have their Medicare paid for, um, the ordinance program, any of the tax programs.
Great, thank you so much for giving that.
Just to pay you back off a Colleen's question, and I think this could be kind of a clarifying question. Um, with some of these programs, so like Connecticut Energy Assistance Program, it's not necessarily that you're seeing a increase in poverty, it's that these these program limits are increasing by the state. So like, like for instance, it's like, um, like sixty percent of the Connecticut median income will qualify for the program like that, so with it, when people become more aware, I I think, and and correct me if I'm wrong, there's a lot of people, like a family of four can make seventy-five thousand a year and still qualify for the Energy Assistance Program. People might not be aware of that, or just the, it's increased over the years, and people don't know that now that they qualify for it. So is is that typically what you're seeing?
Part of it, I think, um, the application process with the state of Connecticut or some of the federal programs are a little more easier for people to apply as well, I also see that while their income may go up, other costs in their households are going up as well. So they're finally feeling that stress and they're seeking out other programs.
Yep.
Counselor Noonan?
Yeah, so just, uh, again, using Colleen, um, to kind of push my question for as well, so is is that a recorded, the the poverty rate increase for Tallinn, is that a recorded percentage by year? How is that calculated for for this fiscal year?
How is the poverty rate recorded? Calculated for this fiscal year?
Okay, um, it's different for different programs, the federal, I mean, I can get you those, the the state may have one level, they they may cause a two-hundred percent, but I I can send them to you, I don't have them off the top of my head. And some of them have the state puts together and the feds put together.
Okay, but you 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 would say that that's increased?
Did it increase?
And fifteen months may increase every year, meaning it it could go up two hundred dollars or something, I would at that level. And that's usually done by the state of Connecticut, determinations, or the federal government.
Yeah, sure.
Um, and then, so just to maybe to clarify my question, so the the amount of families that have applied has increased, is is that correct?
Like, I'm sorry, I don't.
The amount of families that have applied for assistance through your office?
Thank you, Katie.
I'm sorry, I have a hearing loss.
It's okay.
Yeah.
So have you seen an increase in the number of families that have applied for entitlement programs or other programs that you offer?
Yes.
I'm happy to jump in, Bev, I didn't wanna interrupt you, it's hard via Zoom.
Yes, please.
Um, so just talking about energy assistance, I think what we've noticed the most is that, you know, these programs, they change their guidelines every year. And so the income guidelines have changed what that bracket is for that lower threshold. And so we're finding more families fall within that threshold, and every year it's a little bit different. And so for what they put out this year, we found more families in Tallinn are qualifying. Um, in total, last year, we had about two hundred and fifty apps by the end of the season, and so we're not totally over that number yet. But families can still apply for supports through May for things like their electric costs, and so our numbers aren't done. Though deliverables for energy are gonna end at the end of this week, we still have people seeking support for other types of energy costs. So we're at one eighty-four right now, we estimated about two hundred for this year, so I think we're right on target to meet that number. And right now, we've helped about four hundred and thirty-five people, which our estimated was about four hundred and fifty. So I think we're gonna end up surpassing that number by the time all of the reimbursements are done, if that answers that question a little bit.
Yeah, thank you so much for the work that you guys do, um, I just wanted to get an indication on, uh, what the increase was and where. So I appreciate that, thank you.
Absolutely, I mean, even just to speak to the food pantry quickly to give you a snapshot, um, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we on typical like average would support three to four families per week. And what we're finding right now is we're serving six to eight families per week. So just in food pantry alone, kind of showing you that that number has doubled, and we have families calling saying, you know, can we be on food pantry this week? And so that need has definitely increased.
So four hundred and fifty people, uh, helped for utilities. Um, and that's an increase from what, from last year? Do you guys have an, if you have the increase for families fed, um, do you have the increase in that number from from last year, if there is an increase at all?
Yeah, I think it's on page two hundred and twenty-four in the book. Uh, it says for fuel assistance last year, that, or fiscal year twenty-three, the actual was two hundred and fifty applications processed, five hundred people served.
Yep, and then if you're looking at food, so last year, there are about forty-four applications and a hundred and fourteen people. And already, you know, not even at the end of the fiscal year, we've got forty-eight applications and a hundred and twenty people served. So the food pantry numbers are definitely going up already.
Thank you so much for that information.
Of course.
I have a few questions. I know that, um, things like fuel assistance is a, uh, the actual funds for fuel assistance, that's coming from the state, right? Okay, so your office is helping residents with applications?
Yeah.
Okay, and what about the food pantry numbers? I know in the past, uh, there's been some anecdotal information about, um, how uh, people sometimes look for food pantry services outside of their town, are you still seeing that to be the case?
Uh, yeah, when anybody applies for, uh, a field act, we also, I'm sorry, food pantry, we also give them the other, uh, community like here, um, Cornerstone, um, Hockenham Valley and, um, other programs too. So some of them do go, but I would say the majority of our people who come in every week are just using our food pantry alone.
Okay. Okay. Can you talk a little bit about uh, some of the youth service programs that are being offered? Uh, starting like, including like Care and Share and Back to School Vouchers, things like that?
Teresa, you want to try to hit that one?
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely. Um, so absolutely, in the fall, the Back to School Vouchers and Care and Share programs are big things that we offer to our families. And so this fiscal year twenty-four would look at the twenty twenty-three holiday season numbers. And so for Care and Share, we supported a hundred and fifty-seven households, which was two hundred and fifty-six residents. And the Back to School Vouchers increased to forty-five families. Um, in the fiscal year twenty-three, it was about thirty-five. Um, so whether families are becoming more aware of those services, or if we're advertising them a little bit better, they're definitely taking advantage. Um, we're gearing up for our summer musical, and that is one of our programs, you know, biggest services to the community. We already have fifty, um, participants registered, and so we've had families coming in, um, seeking that information. Um, in addition, I've been working with the local prevention council and the board of ed to try to expand into some more community programming, um, now that, you know, we have a full complement of staff, we're able to really look into some of those things. Um, for an example, we're talking about a community campout opportunity, which would follow the prevention model and be something in the summer for students. Um, and I have a couple of meetings coming up, not to, you know, put pressure on anyone, but I do have some meetings coming up, um, with Dr. Willet, and hopefully with Brian to talk about getting some youth up to the Capitol. There is a Youth Services Bureau Day at the Capitol, so we'd be able to take students up there for that kind of an event to see the politicians, to see legislators. Um, and I'm in talks with the high school about National Prevention Week, and so doing some either tabling or some outreach with the youth. Um, we have started our youth advisory board back up again, so we have a few students that have expressed interest and want to start um, with the National Prevention Week. So those are some of the things we have coming up, um, and we did just provide our sponsorship to Project Graduation. Um, so those are the big things on the docket right now, um, and I have a meeting tomorrow with Vernon about, um, it's an employment, um, summer employment, jobs, skills building program, um, for the summer for students. So those are kind of the big things on my agendas right now. I'm happy to answer any questions on those.
Thank you. Um, I'm, I'm just looking at your overall budget here, and, you know, virtually all of it is payroll and HDCC. It feels like you guys are doing the impossible on almost no direct funding. My, is that a conclusion that is reasonable?
Um, so we do support ourselves with grants, and so the, um, base funding for the DCF grant does go into our budget. Um, but we do have a supplemental and enhancement grant from DCF, um, so four thousand four hundred and one for the supplemental and eight thousand six hundred and four for the enhancement. And so those go right into direct service programming. Um, you are right, it's not a huge number. Um, but we do what we can to make that work. We do a lot of stipends and pizza and gift card thank yous to our staff who help us with some of those programs. Um, so that kind of speaks to the community and their willingness to jump in and help. We have a lot of parents who help with our programs. Um, and then our LPC grant from Amplify is four thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars. Um, so we've used, you know, about five hundred of that for Project Graduation, sixteen hundred for a Hidden and Plain Sight Prevention Program, um, a couple hundred dollars to sponsor both the high school musical and then our musical. Um, and so we have a little bit of funds left there, um, but you are right, we're, we're modest with what we provide our, you know, sponsorship in dollars to, um, and we just really rely on the help of the community, which is, you know, incredible.
Thank you. Uh, so is this budget sufficient to meet your program objectives for human services?
Any further questions?
Thanks so much. I'm sorry if it was misunderstood, there's two things, is that poverty then went up, and there's more need, so they're two different things in town.
I think you were saying that the poverty levels went up.
Yeah, and then, besides that, there's also more needs for another.
And more available of the programs.
Yeah. Okay.
Moving on to our wonderful senior center. That has a budget of a hundred and four thousand two hundred and three dollars, an increase of two thousand six hundred and ninety-seven dollars, a two point six percent. Uh, almost entirely of payroll with, uh, some minor fluctuations here and there. Of note, though, however, they did ask for, um, uh, ten hours a week for an administrative secretary position, the amount of fifteen thousand dollars in additional, uh, ten hours a week for fifteen thousand dollars again. Um, I played Scrooge, and, uh, it didn't make it into my recommended budget based on just how the cost of everything in town is going up and the need, uh, this position, um, would help the senior center grave and with expanded programs, setting up and such, uh, scheduling and just about everything when the director's away also, um, increase the hours there to do it. But again, fifteen thousand was not something I, I had an appetite for, uh, increasing anywhere. I asked everyone to come with a zero budget as best they could, um, based on side of payroll. So, uh, keep in mind, our senior center, um, and, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm hardly to blame for that in that we promote it, uh, so much on social media and, and make it such a positive thing in town that it gets more people down there. Uh, you recall, uh, a month or so ago, a, a resident came in and asked for, uh, to consider in the future extending the facility. Um, and so, uh, you know, we're starting to hear growing pains, uh, down there, so, and that's where we are, happy to take questions, um, should we need any? Is Kim on?
Yeah.
And Kim, Kim Koalschen, the director, should be on as well?
Oh, I'm sorry she's not, the way I thought she was going to be on, she couldn't make it.
Okay, so that will be. Any questions?
Questions on, I'll see. Somebody else will go first. Just on, um, page, floor, page two eighteen, correct? I'll try and speak up. I know I speak softly.
I'm trying to hear.
All right. So on the, um, I know Kim's not here, and she runs a wonderful program. And like Brian just said, her Facebook presence has definitely increased. Um, people participated, but I just note on the senior citizens program line, it's, has stayed steady at four thousand with her increased programming. Do you think she actually needs more if her numbers are going up? Or four thousand is adequate?
I think so, we're looking at that, because things cost more money. Um, we've been, I guess we've just been a very frugal budget between human services and the senior center, and rely a lot on, on volunteers or donations from the community. Um, at this point, um, I think, as we put in the budget, the, the crunch that she's really feeling is, uh, the limited orders with the twenty-five hour week position, so I think that's, that's her biggest, you know, not having a staff person there. Um, if she has to go out to a meeting or, or anything, then there literally is nobody in the building, a staff. You know, Becky is our elderly outreach worker, but she's not really assigned to the senior center, she's in my budget and doing home visits, so.
So you don't think you would need an increase in that line?
Kim would probably like it, I kind of held it.
Okay, I'm just wondering, like, just, it sounds like, you know.
But, and we're looking at other grant funding through ARP for, for program materials, you can get that a lot easier than anything but for staff.
Okay. I think that's all. Should be good.
Everybody there?
Okay.
Alex, can you hear us?
I can, I can't see you though.
All right, so a saboteur attacked our microphone, but it's.
You can't see us, you said.
Oh, that's because it's charged, is it charged in the wrong?
No, no, it's just got to reboot.
Give us a sec, Alex, we'll give it a minute.
Yeah, well, I can still see, uh, Teresa as well.
It's coming. There it is. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, go ahead.
Yes.
You're back on.
Yes, thank you.
Just thinking back on, off of Colleen's question, so that senior citizens line, I just noticed it kind of fluctuates, or fluctuated quite a bit, like in twenty twenty-one, it was seventeen hundred, and a year later is fifty-seven hundred, is that?
Programs.
Yeah, programs, and I started the very last one.
It's fluctuating.
Um, do you know why that is? Was the budget just higher in twenty twenty-two?
That fits, I think COVID on, twenty twenty-one's COVID.
That's right.
Certainly, yep.
Yeah.
And then, and then jumped right back, you can't, the seniors.
Yeah, mm-hmm, okay. Um, the other question I had was, I know the seniors got some ARCA money, I was just wondering, like, how much, what's the balance of the senior accounts, or?
So. And the ARCA money, so, it's a pickleball court?
Yeah, the ARCA money is, was very specific to basically capital expenditures for senior centers, everyone, everyone got it across there.
Yeah.
It wasn't a ton, was it seventeen thousand or something like that?
Uh, a little more than that, probably thirty, I don't have it off the top of my head, but that is to, uh, that can leave a department of age, and that, so we just got the prices for the pickleball. So we'll be filling out the rest of the paperwork.
And that's where all of it will go?
Yeah, for that, that part.
Okay, just curious about that. Um, that's all. Thank you.
Other questions? Ashley, say?
Great, great, second question. How, how likely is it to be able to find someone that would only work ten hours a week, is that?
I think they'd increase the person that's there, increase their hours.
Oh, okay.
I, uh, echo what I think was pointed out by Counselor Uticak, and certainly in previous years, was, uh, pointed out by former Counselor Nuccio. Uh, the senior center is running on four thousand dollars in programming, uh, with quite a substantial, uh, increase in, um, attendance. Even just this year, the attendance has, has considerably increased. We've been seeing that in the town managers' reports on a monthly basis. Um, and, um, obviously in here and in common reporting, so, um, I.
I, I think Kim could utilize additional funds in that account.
Yeah.
When we were putting our budget together, we were trying to be mindful of Brian's message to us.
Yeah.
As well as we were taking this priority of trying to get this person, and we were concerned about asking for too much in our budget time period.
Yeah.
But she certainly could do more.
I understand, yeah. Yeah, I, um, please express our appreciation for what she does, with what she has. It's, it's very impressive, um, what, what happens at the senior center, and I don't see most of it, but you did. But thank you very much. Is, is this budget sufficient to meet program objectives and goals for the fiscal year?
I would like to see it increase, the first time I've said that in years.
And the priority, just to be clear, would be on those extra ten hours a week for, uh, for the, the administrative position.
Yeah.
That's the priority. Thank you.
Thank you.
I think good job. Oh, that's it.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, thanks, Beth.
Thank you, thank you, Teresa.
Thank you all very much.
Reset here. All right, um, there, fantastic. I, it makes me so happy to see Barbara there, uh, and she's here, but that's also sad, and that this will be her last, uh, budget with us. Um, as we have a new director coming in, but she's been incredibly accommodating, um, when it comes time to, uh, bridge to, to the new employee. So, um, Barbara, thank you, sorry for keeping you so long here at the back of the rotation here, but, uh, we're ready to take a look here. So the total budget this year, four hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and fifty-four dollars, an increase of about eleven, a thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, or two point five nine percent. Uh, of that eleven grand, ten plus is, um, payroll and negotiated wages for union staff. Uh, and then some, uh, programming budget was increased, uh, dues and members and such, and small items, but happy to go through the, the, the budget. And as you can see, uh, our wonderful library director is here to, uh, answer any questions.
Questions on library? Oh, go, go ahead.
So, um, again, just, I mean, obviously, the, there's not a huge amount of numbers that change here, so it's pretty, just a little bit same thing. So I noticed that payroll jumped, uh, from a three sixty-five actual to three ninety-four budget, so that's a thirty thousand dollar increase year over year there, and then we're getting another ten thousand increase. So between those two years, that's a forty thousand dollar increase in payroll. It seems if, if, you know, ten thousand in one year, why was there a thirty thousand jump a year prior? Maybe it's just because of budget, but it seemed like a big jump there.
Did we, Barbara, did we add anybody or anything in those years?
Well, um, for some time, we were, we were understaffed. So yes, we did add people, not, not an additional person, just getting up to our regular, normal staffing. So we were down, uh, a few people for a couple of years, and now, right now, we are fully staffed.
So, so there, was there an additional person added between twenty-three and twenty-four?
No.
No.
So what did you call the jump?
Do you mind me?
Please.
Okay. There was a lot of attrition, we had some retirements in the department, we had some people who left, um, for various reasons, maternity, things like that. Um, so there, there was a short time, especially in twenty twenty-one, we, since the library, uh, with COVID and everything, wasn't open full hours, full programs, there, you'll see a, a much lower amount of money being expended in that fiscal year. Um, moving forward, again, in twenty-two and twenty-three, we did have some attrition, and, and that's where you see the lower costs there. Had we been fully staffed, it would have been up closer to the, um, three hundred and eighty, three hundred and eighty, eighty-five thousand, somewhere around that number for their, their payroll um, in those years. It just had to do with the past few years' significant attrition in the area.
Okay, so twenty, twenty-three, then you're probably short a portion, and we're.
Yes.
Bumped it up. And gathered that certain persons. Okay, Kim, is it, can I get? I, I know I said it a lot, can I get your data actuals on that line?
Sure.
Otherwise, I'll tell you, it's a great library, a lot of good, very good resources in there, it's a great place to go visit.
Thank you.
Well, yeah, good job, good job on your staff too, by the way, everyone.
Great staff.
Counselor Uticak first, and then.
No, I'm good, you're good too.
Okay.
Um, it looks like numbers have recovered since COVID, which is great. Um, how did, how does where we are now compare to prior to COVID?
Uh, I think we're about where we were prior to COVID. Um, it's amazing that every once in a while, someone will come in and say, well, I haven't been here since before COVID. So people are still coming back. Uh, we're trying to create an atmosphere of welcome, uh, attractive building and facilities, staff and materials, so that people do want to come in, and, and I think they do. I think they do.
Great, thank you. Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Barbara, I just want to thank you for, uh, all the years of service in town, and, um, doing a great job at the library, we, we really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I've loved it.
Councilor Noonan?
Yep, can you guys hear me?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
Barbara as well, you can hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, I just, I just kind of wanted to echo, uh, the thanks, I, I remember moving back here to Talon, uh, after being down south, uh, for some time, and, uh, I would definitely consider the library to be like the epicenter of, of care and, and love in the town, I mean, the programs that you guys have, especially some of the outreach programs for coupons, um, for other historic learning possibilities, like for example, uh, Sturbridge Village, uh, some of the aquariums in the area, I know a lot of families were utilizing, um, those, especially those that have children in town. Um, you guys are always have clean facilities walking in and out, uh, especially in regards to COVID. Um, so I just wanted to thank you for that, and you guys, uh, certainly uh, hold a warm spot in the community, at least those are my sentiments, I know that they're shared, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Alex, that's much appreciated, our friends provide all of our museum passes, and that is greatly appreciated by us.
Yeah, thank you so much, they're awesome.
Thank you.
Um, thank you, Barbara, we will definitely miss you. Um, my only question is, is this budget sufficient to meet the program objectives and goals for the next fiscal year?
It is. And thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Barbara, thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Bruce, come on in. All right, moving on to recreation, um, let me, let me note that Bruce also asked for um, increased hours for staff as well. How many hours was that, Bruce, did you want to go up?
Uh, within eleven.
Eleven hours, but again, on the, on the no room for anything, uh, budgeting this year, um, I did not include it in my final budget, unfortunately, for uh, Bruce, um, but for, for your consideration, I wanted you to know that. His budget, a hundred and seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and ninety thousand, uh, increased by twenty, just over twenty-six hundred, which is a one point five five percent increase from the prior year. Um, again, that's, uh, entirely due to, um, payroll and negotiated raises for union staff. Happy to answer any questions.
Questions? Okay, five questions. Uh, Brian, in the introduction to this budget, and now I'm really straining my memory, I feel like, uh, you mentioned somewhere that uh, Celebrate Talon was impacted by this budget?
It was not.
Oh. Okay.
Correct, Lisa?
It was not, but it was supposed to, and it was something that wasn't cut.
Whatever. But, but if we're looking to make room, um, it's, it'd be savings to the town, um, it's a lot of work for Bruce and his staff as well.
Yeah. Um.
So I should consider that for April.
What's the savings to cancel?
Three thousand.
Three thousand dollars. And it's, it's out of the recreational services budget?
This, this budget right here, professional services, three thousand. That's the amount.
So we celebrate talent.
Okay. Yeah. Um, when we added the recreation coordinator a few years ago, uh, the hope was that that position in developing new activities and programming would, uh, progress to be somewhat self-funded essentially through the recreation fund. Um, are we seeing increases to the recreation fund that might help offset the additional cost of that staff, especially to increase the hours?
Um, we've definitely seen an increase in programs and, and registration with her, definitely on board, um, just one program alone, she was able to reignite our after-school program, um, which we tried in the past to do, um, but with limited resources, tough to do.
Sure.
Um, and we are three shy of a full, um, full after-school program. Uh, you know, campus thriving, um, with taking on some more, uh, max enrollment, we've increased that, um, you know, we, we've got some on the me programs that are going now, um, I just like the names, giggles and go and things like that, so they're funny. But there are other programs, definitely that have been, um, no, added due to the presence of another staff, let's say, for food.
Okay. But not enough to offset the additional uh, hours that were requested?
Um, it's, it would be, it's tough to say exactly with the ARPA money that's in play as well.
Yeah.
Um, with everything being half price, I'd like to see what happens when we go back to full price.
Okay.
If we keep that kind of um, population that coming in with enrollments like that, if we think that it possibly could cover that and, um, other expenditures that we do have that come out of the regulation. He could make a business case, he's one of the few that probably could put together a business case.
Right.
If he had the numbers.
Yeah.
That you're suggesting.
Yeah, okay, uh, well, I actually, I appreciate, um, your understanding and, and trying to get a, an understanding on what happens when the ARPA funding is finished, because I think that's a realistic and probably responsible approach, so thank you for that. Um, I hope that, once the ARPA programming is, is completed, that we do see the enrollment stay at this rate, and, and hopefully we can support your business case, uh, next year or the year after, to increase your staffing, so I think hopefully that's on the horizon, I know.
I want to push promotion, as you know, of his programs, because it's a win when we promote him.
Sure.
Especially with him.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, and, you know, with Crandall's and everything else, the improvements there, um, again, it's, it's a holistic approach with everybody on board, but, um, the benefit will lie at the feet of recreation for sure, um, with a lot of this.
Sure. Uh, I'd like to talk for a minute about Celebrate Talon. Uh, I personally see a lot of value in that event, um, but I'm interested in your perspective, Brian or Bruce, on what we should take into consideration if we're going to consider canceling it.
So, um, well, I'll, I'll speak for Bruce and stuff, he probably doesn't really want to say, um, there's a lot of staff work, a lot of fundraising beyond the three thousand dollars that he has to do, um, and I'm not sure I enjoy that coming out of, uh, what we do here in town. Uh, that being said, um, I really want to have a signature event in town. And it seems natural that that signature event right now is, is our Harvest Fest that we have here on the green. Uh, they are competing entities as they're, they're weeks apart, or how far apart are they? Basically, we have to report. A few weeks apart. The numbers can't compare in regards to attendance, it just can't, um, you know, that, that Celebrate Talent is distal to the center, it's distal to ADA accessibility, uh, what we make up for with golf carts and such, and, um, it's a lot of staff work, it's three thousand dollars, and I think the two kind of drain from each other, and I'd rather focus on our signature event here in the, the center of town. With the thought of moving a lot of the programming from Celebrate Talent to our next-door neighbor, Green, right on the other side, um, in front of TN, essentially, and a lot of the great things that we have there, that, that was my selfish goal in talking to Bruce and attending everything, as you know I do, and kind of looking around and, and what is best for the town. That's, but again, it's selfish in my opinion.
Um, thank you for that perspective, and I, I appreciate you coming with productive ideas on, on the priority for our community, so thank you very much, I, I greatly appreciate that. Um, if if something like this were to happen, um, could we look to the town to help, uh, support the Harvest Fest event, like, I believe that event is primarily organized and run by the PCC at this point, right?
Correct, uh, they do get, they do get, um,
They get some funding.
Budget, yes, uh, small, but, um,
Sure, we saw it last week.
Yeah, I, I don't know how much of an increase moving Celebrate Talent to there would be, it depends on who wants to from Celebrate Talent that isn't already involved in the Harvest Fest now, uh, bring it set up there, uh, Bruce, do you have any thoughts on that? Would there be a cost to anyone moving and jumping over to instead of doing Harvest Fest down there? The only, I mean, uh,
Yeah, Celebrate Talent, yep. Uh, the only cost that would be associated was, is if you're bringing like, uh, the inflatables or, uh,
Which is not a bad idea.
And, and the, like, the other ass, other games like that, but everything else, um, wasn't, wasn't, uh, anything of a cost, you know, to, to come and participate, I was free to to those that want to have a boot there.
Sure.
Yeah.
Uh, and I appreciate, and I appreciate that a lot of time goes into the Celebrate Talent event from your staff. What, what would your staff be otherwise doing if, if we remove this from your stack of duties?
Um, all the other programming that we do, um, I mean, we're coming out of the tail end of summer, so summer for us is a full sprint, and when you're talking about Celebrate Talent, it's September, we're at that point focusing all on fall programming, um, and there's still the other special events that we're working with, like with our Halloween event, um, you know, we have to make sure that, that the big man at the North Pole is set, um, or the letters that he needs to write, um, so there's plenty, plenty of work that we have, um, there is no worries that there's going to be a lack of work, that's
Fair.
Going to be there.
Okay. Um, thank you, appreciated. I have a question about the utilities line. Um, and, and I I've had a little bit of an advantage because we had this discussion last year and the year before, um, I believe that rec services is one of the few departments that pays their own utilities, is that correct? Why are you all looking at me? Look at him.
This, this, most of the utilities, and after that, we, the recreation fund covers, um, above and beyond the forty-four thousand.
And, and when we, we're talking about utilities, we're talking about uh, utilities at the, the rec center building, which is a municipal building.
Correct.
Right, but, um, the library, for example, doesn't pay utilities for their, their use of utilities, this is unique to the rec center. Yes.
I'm, I'm unaware of the history of what the intent was when that was created, this process was in place, uh, when I got here, unless you're aware of the, the history.
Lisa might be.
Okay, yes, historically, um, the recreation fund went, years ago, the recreation programs and everything were in this building. So the utilities were all part of the overall operating budget of the public works department, uh, where they do the rest of the utilities. What happened was when they moved to the Parker School Building, when they went in there, the utilities became part of their expenditures regarding their programs and everything else. Um, the town was not paying for their utilities. We were drawing off of the recreation fund where a lot of their program revenue was going into, and it got to a point where the utilities were so expensive um, within that budget, that the town had to pick up some of the cost for those utilities, because it was something they never had to absorb in their programs, and they couldn't help out price their programs, you know, there was only so much they could increase the cost of providing programs, so what we did was, was to try to phase it into the budget, so you'll notice that one year it was thirty-six thousand, um, we were going up, what, twelve thousand a year?
Yeah.
To get it to a cap of the agreement at that point was to bring it up to forty-four thousand, and then anything over and beyond that, the recreation programs, the revenues from those programs would have to take the differential and, and pay for it.
Okay. What's the differential?
Do you know how, how much extra you're adding to your budget? We'd have to get it back, do you?
Yeah, I think, um, please, Stu.
Can you get that?
I understand the, I appreciate that historical perspective is a little unusual uh, to charge a, a town department for use of a town building. Uh, but it would be great to understand the full impact of utilities. Right, and so is this budget sufficient to meet your program objectives and goals for the fiscal year twenty-five?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. So that, that's it, right?
Yes.
Um, Brian, could you, before we move on, uh, tell us what the next steps are for the budget? Walk us through what happens.
Please, I don't have my calendar in front of me, um, I know on April fourth is the big meeting, uh, that, that you have, can I go, can you give me a minute to go grab my calendar?
We got it right here in the book.
Oh.
Pages.
Page fifty-nine. About page fifty-nine. Page sixty-two and sixty-three. The next, do you have that, Brian?
I do, thank you very much. So the public hearing, uh, will be on April second, it'll be noticed, um, well in advance, and we'll have that here, um, that'll be on everything, you know, then they can talk about the board event, town government, capital improvement debt, um, that's in council chambers, chambers here, April fourth is, uh, the big night, uh, uh, council discussion where the budget is finalized here in council chambers, uh, that's at seven PM as well. April tenth, we advertise the budget. Uh, the seventeenth is the annual budget meeting, uh, council persons, council, council chambers. Eighteenth is the annual budget presentation at the senior center, something that's had been on and off, but, but I've done since I've been here and enjoy doing that. And then the, the annual referendum is on May seventh, although most of this is defined, uh, by charter. And then, uh, on May fourteenth, should the referendum be passed, the town council establishes a mill rate, uh, following the referendum.
Thank you. Any questions on budget process for the next couple of weeks? Ashley, say?
What's the big difference between the second and the fourth?
The second is the, um, public hearing.
Right, so is that just the public talking, we just sit here and listen to them, we have no comments or anything, it's just to let them let out their concerns or?
That's basically it, yes.
Okay, and then the fourth is us getting?
Yeah, we all talk and convince and?
And no public participation.
Correct.
Okay.
I have to look at the agenda.
Is there, is there public, is there public participation before and after that meeting as well, or is that just us discussing?
I don't think there has been, um, in the past, I'd have to look it up. Uh, at that point, we've done our public hearing and three meetings of
Yeah.
Uh, where we're allowing the public to speak at the beginning and the end, so I would think we can move forward without public participation that night.
Okay. Okay, great.
Any other questions about process? All right. So then we'll move on to item four in our agenda, which is public participation, again, this is limited to agenda items only, with a three-minute limit, we are going to With a three minute limit, we are going to enforce the time limit. Um, if anyone wishes to uh participate, you can come up to the table, give us your name and address, or raise your zoom hand, and uh we'll go back and forth. We'll start in the room.
It's me. George George. Fishing Gate Road. Thanks for asking for the dates I mentioned to you. One of the things I I just like to point out, we have to realize on on these higher taxes, and I know everybody thinks we need them all, and probably to some extent we do, but remember higher taxes lead to higher fuel oil help, which leads to higher food pantry help, et cetera. A lot of seniors don't want to put their hand out. And they they feel bad about it. But it it's getting to the point where more and more people are gonna have. Uh it's 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 really a sad place. I mean, I've had my whole life here and uh it was twenty six in my family growing up, aunts, uncles, everybody on the farm, grandparents and cousins and so on and so on, brothers, sisters. And now there's two of us. I have more relatives in Florida than I do in town. So I I really like this, you know, we I I understand the need for increase, but somebody pointed out something about like only twenty nine dollars a month. People always break it down and make it sound cheaper, but when you look at the whole thing for the year, me personally, that wipes out my social security increase. Luckily, I have some money it it that it was put aside, but it's getting eaten up. And where do I come up with the extra for the food, the gas, fuel, oil, lights, all those kind of things? So each year, I'm getting a little worse off. And I and I know a lot of people that are worse off than I am. There are people still, I have, still have a month mortgage. My uh things are paid off. What I have, my new car was a twenty fourteen. My pickup is a nineteen ninety. So where do I go from there? I try to keep everything maintained, but you know, I just be aware of all the people you're affecting with all these different budgets, and everybody has the need, but so do the rest of us have a need. So just please take that into consideration.
Thank you. Is there one, anyone online who would like to participate? You can raise your zoom hand or press star nine. All right. Not seeing any takers and no one else being in the room, we'll move on to item five, which is adjournment. So our motion to adjourn?
So moved to nine sixteen.
Thank you, Jacob. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chris. Is there any objection to adjournment? Any objection? Any objection? Without objection, then we are adjourned.